Good evening and welcome to City Hall. We're having a nice night, enjoying each other's company, but we've got to get going with this meeting here. So, we welcome you to our meeting, the City Council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance or on the podium rail to my left up here. When you fill it out and your address and everything, if you'll bring it up to the clerk, she sits right in front of me, they will pass that to me. And when I call upon you, we ask that you limit your comments no more than three minutes. And for information here, one of our wonderful councilmen, Councilman Bron is, I think, up north right now seeing his grandchild. And so, he is joining us by telephone tonight. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with an open meeting law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we had the opportunity to have the invocation given by one of our favorite North Las Vegas pastors, Pastor Charles Wright from the Holy Trinity AME Church. Following that, we will have their Pledge of Allegiance led by Jill DiStefano, the President of the Protectors of Tulley Springs. Please rise.
We join in prayer today, calling on you, oh Lord, to guide our hearts and our minds as we join together in this council meeting. We pray to God that you might guide each of us as we share together. Be with each and every one of these community leaders as we take care of the business that is at hand, the political climate that is so much discourse. We pray right now, Lord, that you might oversee this gathering, that all that takes place might be pleasing in your sight. Lift up this, our dear mayor, and the entire council, dear Lord, that you might continue to protect one and all. Have your way this evening, and we'll be ever so careful to give you all of the praise. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, two wonderful people, for all you give to our community. We sure appreciate you, Pastor, and thank you, Jill. Moving on to council items, Councilman Bron, are you with us?
I'm with you. It says here that I got a message from Mayor Protem to press the mute button when I'm not talking, so I'm going to do that.
Okay. Did you have some exciting news in your district that you wanted to talk about, your council?
Yeah, just a couple of things here. Number one, you know, Mayor, it was a big honor to be present at the historic Apex Waterline Groundbreaking that was a perfect representation of your leadership, our staff leadership, and leadership by the businesses, communities, especially North Las Vegas businesses, to put together this incredible project that's going to be probably the most important, even though it may not be recognized right now, probably the most important business driver and job driver for the next 10 to 20 years. Also, going along with that, Mayor, I'm very proud that tomorrow will be the ribbon cutting for the I-15 and 215 interchange at 10:00 a.m. They're at Tropical and 215, so if members of the public, if they can make it, that'd be a fantastic thing for them to show up. Again, another historic groundbreaking and yet another win for our city and for the whole valley. I want to invite our friends here to the end-of-the-year celebration pool party, I call it, again, Pool-a-palooza. It's going to be an end-of-the-year celebration at the City Park Pool on Saturday, August 11th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Again, I'm really happy that we'll have it open here towards the end of the school year, I mean, end of the summer. And finally, of course, we have Maya Tanama teaming together with other local North Las Vegas businesses and a little bit here with the city of North Las Vegas to do a backpack giveaway right here at the North Las Vegas City Hall, which will be next Tuesday, the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And so, I know Councilman Scott Black is also doing a backpack giveaway next week. And we're going to be hitting the north end or in the south end of the city, and we're going to have backpacks for everybody, I think. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate you being with us. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things quickly. If we haven't on the overhead, I'll be happy to mention once again about our event coming up, our Military Veterans and First Responder Event on September 8th at our beautiful Craig Ranch Regional Park. Begins at 11:00. It's open to the public, free to the public. And of course, for all of our veterans, first responders, and their families, all the food and everything is free of charge. And we're going to have some terrific entertainment over there. Rob Garrett, Phil Flowers, and some other people will be on board. So, I think I was promised by somebody that it'll be very, very cool that day, but if not, we'll have plenty of cold water for you. Also, let me just acknowledge, before I forget, over here, you know, we work very closely with our Veterans Village, Johnny Stark, and it was very recently that they opened up one of the first shelters for women veterans. And our employees over here did a fantastic job in collecting some stuff, I say stuff, garments, bedding, sheets, pillows, everything that needed to be purchased new by state ordinance. And they did a fantastic job, and that'll be in my e-newsletter. Also, at Sun City, Aliante, we'll be doing a collection for not only those items, but also for additional gently-used items like plates, silverware, and other issues and items that our women veterans could use. The September 8th event I mentioned, but let me also touch on the fact that it was very recently that, I believe, that it was in the newspaper too, that our veterans, I'm sorry, our volunteers in police service were very instrumental in apprehending and kind of holding down a person that took it upon themselves to light fire to a RV that was stuck on 215 under the overpass at Aliante. You know, our volunteers in police service do not get physically involved, they don't carry weapons or anything like that, but they do patrolling into the yards and the ears for our police department. And this is just one single example of having them onboard with our police department where they have their police radios and they were able to go ahead and contact the police, and they apprehended this person who set that RV on fire in the parking lot at Aliante Casino. So, once again, I'd like to just recognize all of those volunteers who give their personal time free of charge to our city and say thank you to them again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Very nice. Mayor Protem going's round. Nothing to respond. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. On August 6th, next Monday, I'm proud to have a second annual backpack giveaway sponsored by myself and Second to None Motorcycle Club. This year, we've added a few elements. I've also partnered with Southwest Bikes, Southern Nevada Bicycle Coalition, and Olympia Companies slash Sedona Ranch to give out, in addition to the 450 backpacks with school supplies, 1-gig flash drives, and we're also raffling off 40-plus new BMX bicycles from Southwest Bikes. We'll be doing that through, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:30. We'll also have some booths there with education regarding bike safety, safe routes to school. We're going to be giving helmets to the kids that are fortunate enough to win the raffle of the bicycles, so I'm really grateful for the supporters to help get the kids ready for school and also to promote bicycling, which is healthy and an efficient way to get around town, lots of fun, as long as you do it safely. The next event is the Friday, so I'm having a party on Monday and Friday next week. On the 10th of August, I'm partnering with Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick from Clark County, running a back-to-school swim party movie night at Silver Mesa Rec Center at 6:00 p.m. We're going to be watching Moana, and we'll be having some snacks and a good time in the pool watching a movie. Really quickly, the backpack and bicycle giveaway is also at the Silver Mesa Rec Center in Ward 3. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great things happening in your districts. We're going to move on to presentations right now. Councilman Black has a presentation. What we do every month is we highlight a business in our community, and we rotate it from councilperson to councilperson. So, Councilman Black would like to present a certificate to the Desert Industries as the Business of the Month. So, let's go down front.
I'd like to invite Barbara and Brian, Development Councilors from Desertet Industries, to join us up here. So, those of you that are not familiar with Desertet Industries, it's located at 3750 Craig Road at the corner of Allen and Craig Road. They operate a thrift store with some high-quality used, repurposed, and some new items. Desertet Industries historically was started in Salt Lake City at the end of the Depression in 1938, and it was developed as a welfare program to help folks to achieve a higher level of self-sufficiency and productivity in that difficult time. Since 1938 till now, there are 45 Desertet Industries locations spread around seven states. We're fortunate to have the best one here in North Las Vegas in Ward 3. The location on Craig Road was opened in 2007, and they employ, on average, between 110 and 120 employees at their, they have warehousing, merchandising, and then, of course, the retail front end. But in addition to that, all the proceeds that they take in from the thrift store goes to their training programs. The associates that work there not only have employment, but they also have the opportunity to upskill, to develop a trade, something like a CDL, phlebotomist, different types of clerical work. And then, they're deployed out into the workforce. And even better than that is they have a business partnership program where you can try before you buy, if you will. Desertet Industries will pay for the person's employment for 28 hours a week for up to two months. Is that right? About 12 weeks? And they come with their, all the insurance, shots, papers, everything. Just kidding. But it's a great, great program. It really helps the community in terms of employee development. So, I'd like to recognize Barbara and Brian, and if they'd like to say something, before we applaud for these awesome individuals.
Well, we couldn't do what we do without the community's support, and our location here is perfect in North Las Vegas, such great community support. Again, we're self-supporting those donations, really help pay for all the things that we do. The businesses here, RC Willie, Smiths, we've got wonderful ongoing business partnerships with them and really thrilled about that. This month is actually our 80th anniversary, and as a thank you to the whole community, from August 13th to August 18th, everyone come in, everything's 20% off on all those donated items. So, we hope to see you there. And thanks again.
I was hoping for 80% off for the 80th anniversary. So, the City of North Las Vegas Certificate of Recognition presents on August 1st to Desertet Industries for your invaluable service since 2007. Thank you for making a difference in our community with your charitable donations and personal development and job training opportunities for individuals in the community. Best wishes for many more years to come, 80 more years. Let's hear it for Desertet Industries.
Great. Continuing on, moving on to public forum. This is set aside for public comment and post-agenda items. The public forum excludes discussions of public hearing items and will be heard later separately. So, if you want to speak at any items listed under the Consent Agenda, Business, or Ordinance Final Action, now is the time to let the city clerk know. And I have some blue cards here, Madam City Clerk, and then, we're going to make one change.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, so, there are several folks here this evening from Club Aliante in Ward 3, and they'd like to speak, and I was hopeful that we might be able to make an exception and move them to the first public comment, even though it's not related to an agenda item.
How many speakers are you going to have?
There are about 10 folks here. I don't know how many, if they're all going to speak. Oh, three individuals, roughly, three.
Okay. Before I bring in this group on post-agenda items, would you guys like to come up here really quickly? And then, we will make that allowance for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi. Okay. My name's Christine Jens, and I'm here representing Club Aliante. I'm a homeowner. A few years ago, let's see, in 2016, I attended two meetings where the developer proposed the homes that were going to be built to the west and north on the border of Club Aliante. We came in not with a "not in my backyard" attitude. We knew these homes were going to be built, we had no problem with that. But we had just a couple of simple requests that made sense at the time. We asked that they not build two-story homes along the border, which they said was already set up with the original developer because they were going to keep like-like. And since we had single-story homes along the edge, they weren't going to put two-story homes looking into our home. They also said that we were going to have a border between the two properties, and they guaranteed us that the border was going to go all the way around the edge, so that there would be sort of a buffer zone. They said it was going to be either a walking trail or a park. They weren't exactly specific about what it was going to be. There was an attorney named Stephanie Allen, who was a land use and zoning attorney, and she presented the plan to the city that day. And during the meeting, she assured us, and I took notes, I had written, "We will build only single-story homes along your boundary, and we will have a walkway or buffer zone between the two as well." She assured us we had nothing to worry about. I promise that these will be taken care of. There are a lot of people here today who are present at these meetings and recall that vividly. She also held a meeting January 5th at the Aliante Community Center in Sun City, where there were a lot of us present. Again, she, both Sun City and Aliante, were promised single-story homes along their borders. I don't know if it's possible to get a recording of this meeting or if a transcript was taken. If the developer made misrepresentations to the homeowners, can they build whatever they want? That's what we want to know. Why do these meetings even occur, then? What recourse do the homeowners have? We were promised that we would have single-story homes along our border. What we're getting now, as we've gone on into the field, is two-story homes. On parcel 4.5, they're building two-story homes right up to the edge that will literally be feet from the border of Club Aliante. Construction hasn't yet begun on parcels 4.1 and 4.2, which are more north on our boundary. We were also given promises on these, and we are here today to seek and prevent two- and three-story homes from being built, as which was originally guaranteed to us. We also want to know when the rules were changed a little bit. Basically, in June of 2017, there was a meeting where apparently, where apparently, they presented to the city council the new rules. Oh, 30 seconds. So, at what point, why were we not notified, for starters? Isn't there a notification process? They had our emails. I received several emails from Ms. Allen, providing the information. But none saying, hey, we're going to have a meeting in front of the city council.
This is not a post-agenda, so we're just taking information. We will not answer questions at this time.
Okay.
You were just given a courtesy by the councilman, okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi there. As a lot of you know, I live right on that wall. It's literally my backyard. And when we purchased in 2005, you know, we were told we had a 20-foot setback. We've got a great view of the mountains. I know views aren't guaranteed. But, you know, from what I've heard tonight, I mean, many of you know me personally, I don't know why we didn't get a call or say, hey, this is happening. What I want to say about Aliante as a neighborhood, and through the recession, we propped North Las Vegas up. We really did our job. My house dropped 70% at one point in time. We're still down about 40% on my house. I don't expect it to come back, but it's certainly not going to come back if we're not building some kind of like-kind development or a really nice comparable development around Club Aliante. So, I would hope that the city would help prop us up. We're having, I'm a real estate agent. I'll give you an example. I've had two listings, same floor plan. One is in North Las Vegas, is 10 years younger than the one I had in Las Vegas. It appraised $50,000 less, same house, and 10 years younger than the other house. This is what we're already facing in North Las Vegas with appraisers. We've already got a problem, and let's not make it worse. You know, we didn't want Carl's Jr. and Jack in the Box and Capriattis. We still don't have a decent restaurant in the Aliante area.
Could you be quiet over there, please, Ms. Richard? Can we hear her?
Just have, you know, it'd be nice if you guys would come out and have a meeting with us in Club Aliante and explain to us the events that have happened, you know, that we don't know about. I don't know the facts, but we certainly deserve an explanation. And I've seen, you know, houses be torn down before in Aliante that were built by builders that should not have been there. It happened with Richmond American. So, thank you for all your consideration, and I hope we get to meet with you all soon.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Kagan?
Marissa Kagan, 7108 Manzanare Street. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. As you know, I got to meet all of you on the Dottie's issue many years ago, learned a lot about planning and zoning. So, I'm really here for Alice Moore. She passed away of a heart attack last year, but she was an owner on this affected parcel in Club Aliante, an original homeowner who sold an anthem for the dream of the jewel of North Las Vegas, what was supposed to be comparable to Summerlin back then. I helped her family sell it, and the new owners came in and asked me what's going to be built there, and I, as the source of the source, is a real estate agent, and I sent them to the city. You have people, you have an opportunity to bring affluent people to North Las Vegas, to buy homes because they're beautiful homes with big lots, with nice views. I know this on a personal basis because I was going to buy in Summerlin, and I bought here instead. If you continue to make these kind of decisions, not keeping in mind the values, the feeling of these communities, what you're going to end up being is a first-time homebuyer community. You'll end up being Nevada's hardest hit. I certainly hope that this council doesn't want every zip code in North Las Vegas to be considered that. It shouldn't be. We have a lot to offer. We have a lot we can do, a lot of positive things we can do. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in North Las Vegas, but we still have a blight attached to our name, and it's because of things like this. I remember well the promises that were made at the Planning Commission level on this particular parcel. The problem is you have laypeople in your audience, including myself, that don't understand all the terminology. So, when they're taught and told, you know, six units per acre, right? They're not understanding that that's not just a single story, that could be a two-story or three-story. They're not understanding that there could be a house built right next door to them looking down on the parcel. And if we can't trust you guys to protect us, who can we trust? So, I'm just imploring that if anything can be done to help these homeowners keep the level of life that they were promised in 2006, please do it, if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. K. You've received a councilman's courtesy. Apparently, there's an issue here. Can you resolve this in the next two weeks?
May I make a statement? So, as soon as Ms. Christine Jens contacted me late last week regarding this issue, I started doing some research internally, trying to validate meetings and things that occurred. And my head hurts because I've been scratching my head for like three days straight, wondering how these two-story homes are butting up against single-story homes in a beautiful community like Club Aliante. And I just want the folks that are here tonight to know is that I'm going to be continuing to research and find out what solution we can come to. I'm hopeful that it's a solution that's satisfactory to everyone, but we're going to find a solution nonetheless, so.
So, I guess the question back to you, Councilman, is could we get a report in the next two weeks?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, you'll get a report. I'm going to meet with, I'd like to, I don't know who to schedule through, perhaps Ms. Jens, but I would like to schedule a meeting maybe at the clubhouse. We can do that next week, but I'll speak to you offline about that. I would love to, but I'd like a few more days to continue my research, if I may, so I have all the facts and can validate what may or may not have occurred and when it may or may not have occurred. So, thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming this evening. All right. So, now, moving forward to the post-agenda items, Mr. Richard, concerning number four and five.
Just want to say that the previous speakers, they had my support. This entire city government is being driven by big builders that have bought the city council and government. You guys are operating on the best interest of the developers because that's where your money's coming from. Okay, let's look at this agenda item here. Okay, this edible marijuana, I would like to know why I have to drive 800 miles to get good pot. The pot I'm buying is overpriced, the edibles taste horrible. Why are we letting Colorado make us look bad by not having better product?
I have no idea what it tastes like.
Shouldn't we do some research on this?
I go home and eat cereal every night because my wife quit cooking. That's about all I eat anymore.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't try marijuana until they made it legal because that's the kind of person I am. And my friend brought me some great edibles that were just tremendous, and he agreed with me, the local stuff is crap. Shouldn't we look into this, find out where Colorado's getting their stuff? Okay, what was the other agenda?
Five.
Five? Okay, let me get to five. Okay, number five. Are you sure that when we go out and get bids, we get on the phone and call the right number of vendors before we make a decision?
We have a three-vendor rule unless there's something specific.
Yeah. Who are these? The same people every time? Why don't we reach out and try other vendors and see? Because last, two weeks ago, you approved $60,000 to air conditioning a tiny little building? Even you thought that was too much money, remember?
Top three get considered.
But are we making phone?
Yes.
When these bids come in too high?
They go out to the general public, the newspaper.
Are we making more phone calls? Maybe you should let me do this because that's my new business. I go out and find, save people money.
Good man.
You should call me first. Because I don't think we're doing enough. I'll bet you the same vendors get this bid on the same jobs, they get it every time because there's probably some corruption going on. Hard, I mean, it's so hard to believe government could be corrupted in America with a president that was born a corrupter. It's so hard to believe local politics can be just as bad as politics in Washington.
Mr. Alpert, Mr. Jeff Alpert, would you please come forward?
Good evening. Jeff Alpert, 3828 Fusiler Drive, North Las Vegas. I wanted to talk about two consent agenda items, numbers eight and 13. Eight deals with Kyle Ranch. I've been doing a lot of research on Kyle Ranch. It's one of the few true historic sites we have here in our city, and it's been a work in progress, and luckily, we've been getting a lot of grant money to work on it. And I understand we're going to have a presentation later under City Manager's Report by Cass Palmer, our Director of Neighborhood and Leisure Services. So, I'm just curious, now that a project is wrapped up on restoration of the Adobe, I'm interested in hearing if there's going to be future work? Is the Adobe now complete? Are there plans for furnishing it? And what are the plans by the city for opening it up for public visits now that it's set up? Will the gate be unlocked? And are there any plans to go after grant money to restore the other, only other historic building remaining there, the Dollhouse? And when I was there a few months ago with Steve Schoeff, who's on Parks and Recreation, we ran into the crew that was working on the Adobe, and we spent some time in the Dollhouse. They actually opened it up for us. We got to see inside and talk about it, and it would be great if that structure could be restored. And I know the mayor knows that UNLV is housing the remains of four skeletons of people that were buried at Kyle Ranch at one time, and they're willing to sign a memorandum of understanding to return those remains to the Kyle Ranch Historic Park, and hopefully, we can arrange for burial grounds there as well. And hopefully, the city will go after grant money to accomplish that. So, I understand Cass Palmer will be up here talking later about it. And I wanted to also talk about number 13, a major road project planned for the future on Alexander from Decatur all the way to Simmons. It's going to involve digging up the street to put in these huge underground vaults for the water to flow. A few years back, the Simmons Project went from, on Simmons, from Alexander up to just north of Craig, and the whole road was closed down. north of Craig and the whole road was closed down for many, many months. So Agenda Item 13 is extending the deadline. So I was hoping I could hear tonight some of the plans for it. What's the possible starting time? What's the projected ending time? Will the whole road be closed at once? Will it be closed in sections? Have any plans been made with Cheyenne High School on access to the campus during the roadwork? Because I anticipate it to be very, very long. And it says in the project notes that I read online that it's starting west of Decatur. I'm just curious how far west of Decatur because that's our city boundary line. And our agenda tonight says that it's in wards three and four, and I'm wondering if that's a mistake, that it should be three and two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alpert. Yes, and Mr. Cass Palmer will be coming up later in the program to give us, after the consent agenda, um, Kyle Ranch update. Um, and finally, Ms. Jill DiStefano. Thank you for leaving us in our pledge once again, Jill.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Jill DiStefano. I live in Sun City, Aliante, on Willow Wren. And I'm speaking tonight as President of Protectors of Tulley Springs in favor of Agenda Item Number 30, which is to approve the exchange agreement, um, that affects the Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. Uh, this agreement was probably started almost two years ago. The staff and the council people in the city of North Las Vegas have worked long, long hours. I know the paper probably goes from here to the ceiling, um, that put this agreement together. The National Park Service, represented here tonight, um, by our Superintendent Diane Keith and our past Superintendent John Burpee, also have worked hundreds of hours to put this agreement together. And I also wanted to mention that the developer of the villages of Tulley Springs, KBS-SOR, also, their staffs and attorneys have worked long hours to do this. This is a win-win for our city and for, um, all the parties involved. It's probably one of the most amazing agreements that, um, I've ever been a party to or seen worked on. It will give us someday our first trail through the Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. So I do appreciate all the staffs involved and the hours and hours that this took to put together, and I encourage all of you to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approved city council regular meeting agenda of August 1, 2018, possible action.
Mayor and Council, staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you, Council. Any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
May I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Councilmember O'Neal, what is your vote?
Councilmember O'Neal?
The outline is still active.
Well, maybe he'll, he might have stepped away just for a second.
Okay, so we'll just do four, zero.
Yeah. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through 19, and our recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as published before you.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Matters listed under set future public hearing dates will not be heard by the county, city council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on these items, attend the meeting where the public hearing will be heard and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 20, set date on any appeals filed or public, required public hearings from the city planning commission meetings.
Thank you, Your Majesty. Clerk, I saw a directive to set public hearing dates as indicated on the agenda.
Mayor, so noted.
Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor and Council ask that presenters for items heard under public hearing that have an associated item in ordinance's final action, state for the record during public hearing if their presentation is for both the public hearing item and the associated ordinance. Associated items under ordinance's final action will be heard and voted on by council later on at this meeting. Item 21, consider appeal of the planning commission decision to deny UN 3418 ZMR Motors, appellant and applicant Mohammed A. Moten, for a special use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a vehicle, boat, or recreational vehicle sales and rental facility located at 2,000 East Carey Avenue, APNs 139, 14, 812, 022, and 023.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, members of the council, George Garcia, 1055 Whitney Rains Drive, Suite 210. Pleasure to be before you, and let me introduce the client and owner of the property and applicant for the appeal.
Mohammed Moten, 2,000 East Carey, North Las Vegas.
And we're here before you tonight, uh, having hopefully worked out and resolved some of the questions, uh, when Mr. Moten was first before the planning commission. This is, he's a, a small businessman, didn't understand the process and how to properly present his case. So, uh, we've been able to assemble that information to make the parking work and basically present to you a project that will take, uh, a, a, basically a building that's been sitting vacant for two years, was an old animal shelter, and convert it into a productive business space, uh, and make some improvements to the property, both inside and out. If we go to the overhead, you can see, and we provided this to staff, and we certainly brief, appreciate the council's taking time on the briefings to look at the improvements, where we're going to add landscaping, where there is no landscaping around the building, uh, on all, on, on, on the, on the rear and on the sides, uh, basically that are highly visible from the street. The building itself will be repainted, the interior has basically been, uh, been gutted, um, and there will be a single office space and then the rest of the majority of it will be for storage. The sort of highlighted orange, uh, light yellow-green is going to be the, uh, the display parking for the, uh, for the automobiles. And then the customer parking and employee parking is, is there on the, uh, on the east side. We have discussed some conditions of approval that we've presented, uh, planning department into you, um, and we've agreed with, uh, seven of the eight planning, uh, recommendations and we're certainly happy to have, uh, worked with planning to accomplish that. And the council, there's one condition from Public Works, uh, and, uh, could, was unable to reach a traffic engineer, but I alerted both Mark and Dale, that we don't believe a traffic study is appropriate at this. The conditions of approval, for example, indicate that this business is restricted hours of operation, you call for appointments only. Um, in fact, it's, I would say the traffic here for this type of operation will be below that if the prior use. There's really, we're not making any changes to the driveways. Uh, there's, the signals are in, the roads are in, and, uh, we would certainly ask council's consideration for not including, uh, Public Works' recommendation for a traffic study. The other seven conditions is expressed by, and agreed to by us with planning and zoning, we're certainly more than happy to accept those, that help make sure that the, what, everything that we've told you will remain in place even if Mr. Moten were somehow to decide to sell the property and move on. With that, Mayor, conclude our, uh, presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Dapron, are you aware of this, uh, traffic study?
Yes, I am. I talked to you. Oh, excuse me, sorry, Mayor and Council. I spoke to, um, our traffic staff about it earlier today and, um, this type of use and this change of, uh, business really doesn't facilitate the need for a traffic study.
I, I missed, what did you, what was that you were, you mumbled?
Talking about the traffic study?
Yeah, we're going to push that to the side?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be my recommendation that there's no need for a traffic study on this.
So, um, before I go any further here, I want to recognize Travis Roundy, one of our planning board members, is here, uh, monitoring this. We appreciate the contribution the planning board does for us, but sometimes when things go past you, they come to us, so we have that responsibility now. So, Council, do we have any comments or questions on this? Any comments, questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. Is Councilmember O'Neal on the phone now?
Councilmember O'Neal?
Uh... I'll let him speak first then.
Councilman, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm so sorry, uh, there's, uh, there's mute button. Yeah, um, uh, there was a couple of things that I, I, that I didn't quite, uh, uh, hear. As I understand, our applicant, Ms. Moten, has, uh, definitely agreed, uh, actually, uh, as I understand, he actually proposed several, uh, conditions, uh, that, uh, I don't have you here in front of me, but one of them, of course, that he's not going to put any obnoxious, uh, uh, that'll, I don't know what they're called, the little guy that, that floats, you know, with, with the fan, uh, there's not going to be any balloons, there won't be any flags. Um, of course, you know, he's going to limit his stock on hand to believe eight or nine vehicles, that it will be by appointment, uh, mostly by appointment only. Um, these are, these are all, these are all correct. Uh, am I right?
That's correct, Mayor. Through you, Councilmember O'Neal.
Now, I, I wasn't sure, I, I, I kind of like quoted out here because sometimes it just gets a little bit like hazy. Um, was there also a, um, condition that, uh, made reference to a traffic study?
Yes, and Mr. Dapron, uh, the Public Works Director, has, uh, pulled that from the list of things that need to be done.
Yeah, you know, I, I myself, um, I, I would not be in favor of a traffic study. I mean, uh, the building and, uh, the previous use, which, uh, is of course an animal hospital, a veterinarian clinic. I mean, uh, we have decades, uh, uh, of knowledge as to what a use, which will be a much higher, uh, and more intensive use than what the current applicant is proposing, uh, that, um, I mean, uh, the, the, the traffic is, is well-known, the traffic pattern is well-known. Um, I really don't see, uh, a, uh, a traffic study, quite frankly, um, to be something that would be, uh, all that necessary considering the fact that we do have decades of what the, the, uh, the use would be, or actually, uh, more intensive use would be. So, um, I guess, uh, I, I would not be, um, I think that a traffic study would be kind of burdensome to the applicant at, at this point. And, um, as I understand, I could also be wrong, but, uh, I, I think you also had many of the neighbors who are actually in favor, uh, of, of this, uh, use coming in because, uh, you have a use, uh, if I, uh, correct me if I'm not wrong, or correct me if I'm wrong, um, you have a use, uh, right across the street from this, the smog hut, that actually I go to get my car smogged, that has a lot more traffic, um, that, uh, uses, that engages, of course, you know, that corner, and it doesn't seem to be an issue at this point. So, uh, I, I would question, uh, whether, again, uh, whether a traffic study, uh, for this, without, without, you know, how, how much, uh, let, it's not going to be as intensive use that, uh, that smog hut, or, um, quite frankly, if they, uh, if you put a business office or, or a veterinarian clinic, or any other kind of clinic, I, I, I question why you would need a, a, a traffic study. That being said, um, again, uh, it seems like any building, um, that is in this area seems to be, um, at, um, instant pressure, uh, from, uh, uh, people who are homeless in the area, uh, to begin to squat, uh, squat in. And, um, I guess a, a sister business, um, the Lake Need Animal Hospital, uh, which used to be located on Lake Need and City Center, we had, you know, while it was abandoned, we had one incident after another of people breaking in, starting fires that endangered the public and endangered our response. So I, I would, uh, I think, um, you know, we, we have a, a new applicant here who is willing to, uh, comply to beautify and bring a, a business and is willing to take a risk, I mean, to do so. Um, and I, I think, um, that shows, you know, a commitment by the applicant. And, um, I, I think in this case, you know, the entrepreneur should most definitely be supported.
Okay, so I, my question, are you prepared to make the motion?
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, unless, uh, someone else wants to say anything. Uh, with that, I would like to, uh, make a motion, uh, uh, instead of to deny, to approve.
Okay, so, and then there was the, we have conditions one through seven that would be a part of that motion that would, uh, that takes care of some of the issues that the county, city had.
Yeah, and, and if, and if, and if, I need to make, uh, if that becomes more clear, it would be, uh, to, to approve with the conditions except for the traffic study.
Mayor, if I may, it would be a motion to modify pursuant to the conditions set forth.
Okay, so your motion will now be, I'll let the city clerk make sure she reads this in the record to you. Go ahead again, Michaela.
Oh, it would be a motion to modify the planning commission's decision to...
Okay, and that'll be your motion, Isaac, right?
With the proposed conditions.
Modify with the proposed changes?
Yeah, uh, yeah, my, my motion would be not to deny, but to approve, uh, the applicant's, uh, project, um, with all the conditions except for, uh, a, a traffic study. I, I don't, I don't know if that actually made it two days, it was the condition, but I, I, I see no need for a traffic study.
Thank you. So we have a motion to...
Mayor, should I read the motions aloud for the record?
Yeah, let's do that for Isaac's sake, so he can hear it.
So the planning and zoning seven conditions are: one, unless expressly authorized through a variance, waiver, or another approved, approved method, this development shall comply with all applicable codes and ordinances. Two, hours of operation shall be limited to 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM and by appointment only. Three, banners, flags, inflatables, or other attention-tracting devices shall be prohibited. Four, outdoor loudspeaker or PA systems shall be prohibited. Five, security cameras with recording devices shall be installed prior to the issuance of a business license. Six, additional landscaping shall be provided as depicted on the revised site plan dated July 10, 2018. Furthermore, the existing planter areas shall be installed with shrubbery to provide a minimum 50% ground coverage within two years of planting. Seven, the storage space within the existing building shall be accessory to the principal use and may not be subleased to another tenant.
Thank you very much. And that will be the modifications. So, we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, it would be a motion to modify the planning commission's decision with the proposed conditions set forth, as read by the clerk.
Thank you very much. Council, any other comments, questions? I don't think so. Please cast your vote. Or the motions, I'll, I'll make the motion for Isaac, he's not there. I don't think Isaac has his piece of paper with him.
Mayor, I mean, Councilmember O'Neal, and your vote is?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. We appreciate you. We just realized you didn't have this, this new piece of information in front of you. Items approved. Mr. Moten, go be successful. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 22, approve DA 0218, South Village 3 Villages at Tulley Springs, for applicant Section ELP to request a major modification of a development agreement to amend the land use on property generally located at the southeast corner of Commerce Street, and I 215, APNs 124, 15, 410, 001 through 004.
Thank you. Council, any comments? Oh, we have a motion, I mean, we have a presentation, Mr. Grownhour, please come forward.
Your Honor, members of the council, good evening. Bob Grownhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant and owner on the property. Um, we've gone through the process, we've worked with your staff, the planning commission has recommended approval. We're asking to remove a portion of the property, as you can see here, out of the master plan community since it's not necessar, necessarily a part of the entire master plan community, and will be coming in with separate applications in the future for entitlements.
Anybody in the public that'd like to come up and speak on this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
Rashad?
No, that's the wrong number. Uh, this is 22.
22.
Um, with that, any comments or questions? I'll take a motion.
Does he want to speak on this?
Do we have a blue card?
Yes.
You're 24 and 25 is what you mentioned. This isn't a, this isn't a circus. You need to sit down.
You sure it's not a circus? Because I think it is.
Say something really quickly and then sit down.
Number one, everybody's taking money from Bob Grownhour. I don't think any of you people should be allowed to vote because you're in his pocket. So, I, and all he does is represent wealthy landowners that want to build crappy houses that you left him get away with because you, because you got $20,000 from him. Everybody up there got at least $5,000 or $10,000, so he owns you. Don't you own these people? They're your puppets, right? I think I've, I've said all I had to say.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public comment. Council?
Mayor, um, unless any of my colleagues over here want to speak to the issue, um, I did meet with Mr. Grownhour. I, I was at the, uh, community meeting with the residents who, uh, who were explained to as to why this speech was being taken out of the, uh, the villages. Um, I'm satisfied with the explanation and what's being done, so I'd be happy to make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Councilmember O'Neal? So...
No.
Councilmember Barone? Okay.
I'm sorry, did you catch that? I said, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-three.
Item twenty-three, approve wave 0218, Basler Four Plax, for applicant G B S Construction L L C. for a waiver in R three multifamily residential district to eliminate the required open space located at the northeast corner of Basler Street and Judson Avenue, A P N. 139, 24, 110, 321.
Thank you, welcome, sir. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Madam Stan Popak. I'm representing the contractor and the applicant.
Okay, so, do you have any statement, or do you just want us to continue and move forward?
Yeah, we're just ready to move forward.
Okay, Counsel, do we have any comments or questions for this gentleman? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Barone?
Thank you.
Items approved.
Item twenty-four, approve Z N. 1218, Maderet Cheyenne, for applicant Center Cheyenne L L C. to request a property reclassification from P U D. Plan Unit Development District to M one Business Park Industrial District on property located at the northeast corner of Cheyenne Avenue and Valley Drive, A P N. 139, 07, 801, 015.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation, Mr. Gronauer?
Yes, for the record...
I want to say something. I'm sorry that you get abused by people. You have no reason to not hold your head up high with the people that you represent and build our community. I just want you to know that, that I, outside of the public comment, we appreciate the kind of quality people you bring into our city.
Thank you, and, and I understand, uh, it's, it's part of the job, and this is the things that you deal with, so... But anyway, on a more positive note, uh, my name, uh, for the record, is Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the property owner and applicant in this application. Uh, this is a request to change a property. It's already been zoned under, uh, P U D. for industrial, and they're coming, we're coming in with M, M one zoning. Uh, we had a neighborhood meeting, we explained what we were doing, and the neighbors were in support, since it was already an industrial development that was already been planned and approved on the property itself. Uh, so that being said, I could have any, uh, I could answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Open this for public comment. Mr. Bishard, would you like to come back up and enlighten us again?
Well, let me just reiterate, I mean...
State your name and address for the record.
Gary Bishard, North Las Vegas, a taxpayer. Um, this, I've been here for eighteen years, and all these wonderful people that Bob brings, they build substandard housing, they're not built to any codes, any meaningful codes, they're energy inefficient, they're water inefficient, and they're built to fall apart. And you, it's your job to make sure that you come up with, uh, codes that are going to be useful over the next twenty years. Let me tell you something, because of climate change in this country, we're running out of water. It's going to get hotter and hotter. These air conditioning units they're putting in are not fit to keep these houses cool. They're, they're not insulating these houses cool. And these guy, and, and, I, I, don't make me out the bad guy, you're the one that took $20,000 from him. That tells me, if you take money from the devil, you should, uh, excuse yourself, you shouldn't be allowed to vote on this, because you are in his pocket. I know you don't like it, because you don't believe in America, you don't believe in freedom of speech, don't, you don't have American ideals, and neither does him. North Las Vegas is the best government money can buy. This guy's a lawyer. Let me tell you what lawyers do. They move money from one place to the other. They don't grow food like a farmer. Engineers build safe buildings, electricians wire the buildings, you know, manufacturers build things, lawyers just make rich people richer. So, don't make me out the bad guy. Have a nice day, and may the God of your choice bless you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, does we get to a point that when you're abusing other people that are coming here to speak and do business, and calling them the devil, that we have to put up with this kind of activity in our city council meeting?
Mayor, we do have rules of the quorum in, in, in the chambers, and so, you know, we try and allow our, our public comment to be free-flowing, but at the same time, we do have rules of the quorum, yes.
Well, we're going to check into that.
Your, Your Honor, if I just make, uh, one quick comment, because I just need to just make something clear for the record. I've been doing this for twenty-two years, since nineteen ninety-six, I've been doing, representing development in North Las Vegas. I'm very proud to stand before you and anybody in this room, because I can tell you, the restaurants that somebody ate at today, the shopping center that somebody went to, the homes in Aliante, the homes in Sedona Ranch, the homes that are around in North, in North Las Vegas, I'm proud to represent all those builders, I'm proud to tell you that the parks that the people play in, up in Aliante and other master plan communities that we have, those are great things that the city has. I'm very proud to stand up here and represent everybody that I have represented in the past twenty-two years, and God willing, I'm here another twenty-two years and work with you and the future councils in doing the right thing. So, I, just for the record, I usually keep my mouth shut on these things. You deal with neighbors who will be abusive like this, all we can do is pray for those people that they're no longer abusive to other people, and they find better ways to exert their, their energies somewhere else. But with that being said, I'm going to ask you to approve this application. Um, we have a developer here that wants to do a nice, uh, industrial development and continue to move forward with this application.
Thank you, appreciate you. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number twenty-four.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilman Barone?
Yeah?
Okay.
Items approved.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five, approve Z N. 1318, Provence and Simmons, for applicant Beazer Homes of Las Vegas, to request a property reclassification from P U D. Plan Unit Development District to R C L. Single Family Compact Lot Residential District on property located at the southwest corner of Simmons Street and Red Coach Alignment, A P N. 139, 05203, 001.
Thank you, please welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Melissa Urie, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210, here on behalf of the applicant. And what we are requesting is to rezone from the existing P U D. with approximately sixty-six apartments to a residential compact lot for a thirty-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision.
Thank you.
And do you have any questions?
Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I believe that's in Ward four. Um, I remember going to that, uh, community meeting, I think there were two gentlemen out there that, uh, had some concern. Did you address your concerns, sir, with, uh, with George, uh, prior to the council meeting? George?
Yes, Mayor, Counsel. Uh, yes, Councilman, their question basically was related to public infrastructure at Lone Mountain and Simmons. Um, of course, we're further down the, the roadway from that intersection, we're closer to Craig, and the key question they were asking, would we be completing the infrastructure at Lone Mountain and Simmons, which is certainly deficient, there are three vacant corners there, and as I indicated them, we have to complete, uh, by the rules, the infrastructure that abuts the property here. Um, that is further to the north, and is those developers, uh, or, or if they're done through the regional, you know, Transportation Commission funding, then there would be sources to complete those, otherwise they'd get built by the developer at that time. Um, so I think he, he understood that, so developer, uh, adjacent to that property is responsible for those public improvements for Lone Mountain and Simmons. And I understand, there's, you know, I've seen the flooding up there, and I know that there's a problem, but that won't be addressed until development occurs. And so, like, in our case, we're completing infrastructure that will actually help fulfill, you know, the roadway, the sidewalks, whatever is required drainage, so this will be helping to complete infrastructure along Simmons, but doesn't address further up north on Simmons at Lone Mountain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garcia. I wanted to make sure that the residents' concerns were, you know, spoken to and addressed. With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Barone?
Let's go ahead and record.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, items approved. Congratulations, Melissa.
Item twenty-six, approve Z N. 1418, V T S. Village One, Phase One, for applicant K B S. S R. Park Highlands L L C. to request a property reclassification from M P C. P C D. Master Plan Community Plan Community District to R C L. P C D. Medium Density Residential Plan Community District located at the southeast corner of Grand Teton Drive and the Clayton Street Alignment, a portion of A P N. 124, 16, 201, 001.
Thank you, Mr. Bishard, Mr., Mr. Gronauer.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master developer for, uh, the Tulley Springs Master Plan Community. Uh, this is, uh, Village One, Phase One, that we are now going to be entering into for construction. The exciting news about this is, you currently have Village Three under construction, uh, and you have people already living in the new master plan community. And in Village Four, you have K B. Homes, who's just recently purchased the eighty acres, and they will be, they're going to be moving along, moving the dirt here fairly soon. What that means is now we're also in Phase One, Village One. So, hopefully, within the next year, you will see up in this corner of the master plan community, uh, some more homes being developed at that point in time. So, we're fairly, uh, excited about the development that's coming to North Las Vegas, and we'd ask you to follow the recommendations by your staff for the approval, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, uh, first off, do we have any blue cards for this? Counsel, any comments or questions?
Um, I don't have any, well, actually, I did want to make a statement, though, without knowing if my colleagues wanted to, uh, address this item. Uh, thank you, Bob. Uh, you know, we've been meeting, uh, on and off, uh, on this issue, and I have to say for the record, please, uh, because the way the, uh, the zoning has been done incrementally, which I didn't agree with, and I still don't, hopefully, uh, after discussion with Councilman Black and myself, we can look into doing something, uh, kind of a, a one-timer. But, uh, just for the record, uh, we don't plan on putting any two-story homes along the Clayton, uh, line, uh, backing up to, uh, the, uh, Sunset Aliante.
If, if you, uh, look on the overhead, and I'll show you, because we've had these discussions, this is one of those hot buttons that we've had...
Right.
For twelve years, I've been doing this, um, since prior to the recession, and if you look at the overhead, I'll show you that we've mentioned, and I believe it's in the design guidelines and, uh, development standards, that we would be doing single-story homes in, in this area located here. Um, I will double-check here, I don't ever remember that we agreed to doing single-story on here, I know this is publicly just saying that, but I know specifically, we said for many, many years, and if it's not in standards, we know by working with those neighbors here that those are going to be single-story homes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
No, I'll be, if we don't have any questions of the council over here, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion? Is any other comments, questions, seeing none, we have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Barone?
I'm sorry about that, working with the button here, yes.
Item number twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven, approve Z N. 1518, V T S. Village One, Phase One, for applicant K B S. S R. Park Highlands L L C. to request a property reclassification from M P C. P C D. Master Plan Community Plan Community District to R one, P C D. Medium Low Density Residential Plan Community District on property located at the southeast corner of Grand Teton Drive and the Clayton Street Alignment, a portion of A P N. 124, 16, 201, 001.
Thank you, Mr. Gronauer.
Yes, uh, for the record, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the master plan developer. Um, I'd like to just incorporate my comments from item number twenty-six, and I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions? Do we have a blue card for this? No? The chair will take a motion?
All right, uh, thank you, Mayor. Again, with the question I asked before, you know, uh, I'd be happy to approve this with all of that, and, you know, obviously, the same being on this item as well.
Okay, we have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes?
Items approved. Moving on to business.
Item twenty-eight, approve renewal of maintenance and support agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $78,414, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute up to three additional renewal periods, in amount not to exceed $259,570 for annual maintenance and support using the competitive bidding exception per Inter S. 332 Local Government Purchasing Act.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Barone?
Yes?
Item twenty-nine, approve inter-local agreement with the Clark County School District for the conversion and exchange of Hartkey Park to build a new J T. Smith Middle School and a new Hartkey Park.
Thank you. Do we have any presentation on this? Seeing none, chair will take a motion?
Mr. Mayor, uh...
Oh, yes.
Here on twenty-nine, whatever you...
Isaac, I think we lost you.
Yes, uh, Mayor, um, I, I want to express, uh, my sincere gratitude to, um, the Clark County School District Board, and of course, their staff, who, uh, in working with our staff, and working, of course, with, with our board, are making this, uh, are the new J T. Smith and the brand-new Hartkey Park, two fantastic amenities, uh, for the children in Ward One, and of course, for the residents of Ward One, uh, to make this, uh, make this possible. And again, I wanted to express my sincere gratitude to them, and, um, I guess that would also be my, uh, my motion to, that is, if anyone else, that is, unless someone else wants to say.
Um, no one else is wishing to speak on this, so if you'd like to make that motion, we'll take it.
Most definitely, uh, that's my motion to approve.
And your vote is? Councilmember Barone?
And of course, uh, I vote yes.
Items approved.
Item thirty, approve exchange agreement for deed of easements and warranty deed regarding crossings A, B, and C, and a portion of Tusco in 83310 with the United States of America Department of the Interior, National Park Service, and K B. S. S R. Park Highlands T R. C. L L C. for the Tulley Springs Fossil Beds Monument.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve, and thank, uh, Ms. Jill DiStefano for coming tonight and, uh, expressing her support.
Thank you, we have a motion, please cast your vote.
Mayor, while you're voting, we also have the, the, our new superintendent of the National Monument that's also here in attendance. I don't know if you saw her in the, in the back, so we'd like to...
Would you like to come up for a second, so our community can also meet you? It was very nice to have you in my office the other day, and I don't know if you've got the other, to get to the other city council people yet, this would be a nice moment for us.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Lee, and, um, I'm here tonight just to thank the, the city of North Las Vegas for all the support, uh, that you've given the monument up to now, and especially on this boat. This is, uh, huge for us, we'll be able to avoid a four-lane road cutting the monument in half, and, um, uh, we really appreciate all the work that your staff and, um, everyone has done to get this done, because Jill was right, the paperwork, and it's still growing, but, um, but we're really excited about this, so thank you.
Thank you. Could you give us maybe a little timeline of what you're hoping for, or what has to take place next for you?
Uh, to get this completed?
As we're moving forward, yeah, and when you might think it might possibly be able to be, start being used by the citizens.
Um, it'll basically be on the timeline of the developer, so, because they're building the, the trail. So, I think that what I've heard is twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two?
Back.
I don't know if you know, but, um, yeah, within the next couple of years, we'll be able to, um, put in a trail system that'll connect, connect the neighborhood to the monument. And we hope to be doing this in many other places around the monument, so that we can make sure the public has, uh, connection to the monument.
Well, thank you, and we are and want to be great supporters, and anything we do to help you, please come back and ask for it.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, city manager, that was good.
Mayor and Counsel, I'd also like to, to, um, they've worked very hard with our city attorney's office, with Jonathan Winn there, and Johanna Murphy, and, and, uh, planning, and they've really taken an agreement that, uh, passed this body a, a while back, and have, have really, uh, staff has done a, a great job, um, for anybody that, that thinks that, um, developers can come in here and, and push their weight around, and I think Gronauer was on the other side of this, they'll know that there were some, um, very important negotiations, concessions, that staff was able to, to get, to make sure that this is something that's tremendous benefit for the city, and I think they, they did an outstanding job representing, uh, your constituents in our city. an outstanding job representing your constituents in our city. Thank you.
Great, and thank you, staff. This is such a worthwhile project.
So would finish the voting for this item?
Well, I'm gonna take a motion right now.
We have a motion, we just haven't got a vote yet.
Oh, okay. Who made the motion?
Councilman Churchill.
Oh, Councilman, thank you. Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Verone?
Yes?
Items approved.
Item 31, approved purchase agreement with the southwest traffic in a total amount of $53,327.50 for the purchase of assorted traffic signal equipment to replenish the existing inventory and use at the Traffic Operations Division.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Yes? Yeah, Verone, yes?
Yes.
Items approved.
Item 32, pass and adopt Resolution Number 2613, providing for the transfer of the city's 2018 private activity bond volume cap to the Director of the State Nevada Department of Business and Industry of the State of Nevada.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Verone, yes?
Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Ordinances listed under Final Action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item 33, pass and adopt ordinance number 2886, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Admissible Code by reclassifying approximately 32.75-plus or minus acres therein, from PUD Plan Unit Development District to an M1 Business Park Industrial District, ZN 1218, Materite Cheyenne, for property generally located at the northeast corner of Cheyenne Avenue and Valley Drive, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Do we have any presentation on this? Seeing none. If there's no comments or questions, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Items approved, or please cast your vote.
Councilmember Verone?
Uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, yes.
Items approved.
Item 34, pass and adopt ordinance number 2887, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Admissible Code by reclassifying approximately 6.71-plus or minus acres therein, from a PUD Plan Unit Development District to an RCL Single Family Compact Lot Residential District, ZN 1318, Provence and Simmons, where property generally located west of Simmons Street and approximately 575 feet north of Craig Road, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Verone, yes?
Items approved.
Item 35, pass and adopt ordinance number 2888, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Admissible Code by reclassifying approximately 75.83-plus or minus acres therein, from an MPC-RZ6 Master Plan Community Residential District up to six dwelling units per acre, MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential District up to 10 dwelling units per acre, MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community District up to 13 dwelling units per acre, and MPC-RZ50 Master Plan Community District up to 50 dwelling units per acre, to an RCL PCD Medium Density Residential Plan Community District, ZN 1418, Villages at Tulie Springs, for property generally located at the southeast corner of Grand Teton Drive and Clayton Street Alignment, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Verone, yes?
Items approved.
Item 36, pass and adopt ordinance number 2889, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Admissible Code by reclassifying approximately 29.01-plus or minus acres therein, from an MPC-RZ6 Master Plan Community Residential District up to six dwelling units per acre, MPC-RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential District up to 10 dwelling units per acre, and MPC-RZ13 Master Plan Community District up to 13 dwelling units per acre, to an R1 PCD Medium Low Density Residential Plan Community District, ZN 1518, Villages at Tulie Springs, for property generally located at the southeast corner of Grand Teton Drive and Clayton Street Alignment, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion for approval.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Verone, yes?
Items approved.
Thank you.
Item 37, pass and adopt ordinance number 2891, amending ordinance numbers 2711, 2267, 2746, and 2757, amending the development agreement for the Villages Tulie Springs between the City of North Las Vegas and KBS SR Park Highlands LLC, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, actually, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
It looks like tonight, if it was happening in North Las Vegas, it looks like it was happening in Ward Four.
It is tonight. Thank you.
You know, Councilmember Verone, when I was, I was just about to make the motion to approve, and I was going to apologize to you for monopolizing this part of the agenda, so I'm happy that you said that. But I will be happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
And Verone, yes?
Items approved.
Item 38, pass and adopt ordinance number 2903, amending Title 10 of the Admissible Code to establish the Parking Services Division of the Economic and Business Development Department of the City, and to establish restrictions for parking in the public right-of-way and civil penalties therefore, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we do. And if Gina could also, Director Gavin could also come up here, so we do have a presentation.
My name is Seraphin Calvo. I am the Parking Services Manager for the City of North Las Vegas. This is my second week, and I'm glad to be here to give a brief presentation of what the Parking Services Program is going to look like. So, without further ado, so why Parking Services is important. This is a new program that the City of Las Vegas is going to implement, and one of the main reasons is obviously the improvements to the quality of life. This means that neighborhoods and communities are going to be able to increase property values. I know we discussed this earlier in this council meeting, by ridding the streets of abandoned vehicles, and any other vehicle that's abandoned in the neighborhoods, and addressing other public safety violations. It reduces traffic accidents and pollution. The way this, this happens is because a lot of times, vehicles are illegally parked too close to an intersection, or at a stop sign, or facing the wrong flow of traffic. This is a potential hazard that could cause accidents, and has been known to cause accidents. The pollution, abandoned vehicles tend to collect debris rather quickly, so within a week of a vehicle being stored on the street, if the resident isn't sweeping the streets, or the street sweeper can't get around, or vehicles that are leaking fluids onto the street and the gutters. It'll also assist with general public safety violations around the schools, around the parks, and in our neighborhoods. It'll also address handicap violations that tend to be a problem for people that need accessibility to these spaces. It'll also help create more attractive neighborhoods and communities. Again, this is a beautification process that's going to allow us to be able to, excuse me, remove vehicles from neighborhoods that have been neglected, abandoned, stored, or just sitting there for an extended period of time. It'll also improve mobility for non-drivers in our communities. Additional benefits, this is, this is something that I think is a big part of why this is so important. It'll reduce the burden in the court systems and police. One of the things that this is, this ordinance change has done is that these violations were moved from a criminal to a civil setting. So anybody that is issued a citation, they don't have to go to the court systems and bog those systems down a little bit more. This will be handled internally through an adjudication process, or a hearings officer internally. It's also going to enhance the customer service. When I, when I worked for the City of Las Vegas, we used to get calls all the time for requests for enforcement. Unfortunately, we were, North Las Vegas was out of our jurisdiction. So now, there's going to be an opportunity for the public to request enforcement in their neighborhoods regarding these non-moving violations. It's also going to allow us to provide customer service at two customer service windows here at City Hall, and the educational component will be, we are looking to and hoping to be able to do as many town hall meetings as we can, so I would invite council, if ever you have a HOA, or a group, or a school that, that wants us to come in and explain what is legal and what is not, be more than happy to do it. Daily response to parking complaints. So, these complaints come, come in in a regular, daily basis, and I understand now, North Las Vegas Police Department receives a lot of these complaints, and unfortunately, their priority calls are, you know, important. So parking sometimes gets neglected, and, you know, we don't get resolution on these problems. So we'll be able to increase that response time to the citizens when they call in a complaint. There's also something we call a CAR. Acronym is Council Action Request. So as council people, if you get calls from the public that has a priority that needs to be addressed, you would notify us, and we would address those complaints on a priority basis. Also, the proactive engagement and beautification process in each ward and every community within the city. These are some examples of some of the issues that we identified within the City of North Las Vegas. The car on the left that kind of envisioned what our city manager, Mr. Juden, was talking about the last council meeting, believe it or not, there's a lot of vehicles like this in our, in our communities. It doesn't matter what neighborhood you're in, it happens, and it is a safety concern. There's one on the, on the bottom that's a no parking zone in and around schools, and there's no parking zones around schools for a reason. There's, there's obviously a safety factor behind that, and that's one of the things that we'll also be addressing. So if anybody has any questions, I would love to answer them for you.
Mayor Protem Brown?
Thank you, Seraphin. I think this is great, and I get, I get calls probably daily with the same issue. My question is, with moving all of these kind of cars, will people be more tend to pile them up so that their front yards become parking lots now? Is, is that code enforcement going to handle that, or is it going to work hand-in-hand?
We, we definitely will work hand-in-hand, because it does happen at times where we deal with public right-of-way, and code deals with private property. Well, code will address an issue on private property, so they'll bring the car to the street, and that's where the lines of communication really have to come into play, and, and, you know, this is something that, that will work very well together, both departments.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I'm really looking forward to having you here, working with us. We get an awful lot of complaints, as Mayor Protem Pamela Grouns Brown mentioned. We do have our volunteers in police service that are ready, willing, and able to assist you in any way, and it's a pleasure to have you on board with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Director Gavin, you came up here. Would you like to add to this presentation?
Before Director Gavin says anything, we want to make her official, so, you know, this is being put underneath her department, so we got her a little-
Do I get a badge?
A little hat, right? I think it's, now she's officially in the Village People.
Don't make me bust out the YMCA.
Got her a hat.
I knew who I want you to rest first.
Yeah, and a badge. It's not real, Gary, but-
Oh, I'm so excited. We can share it.
So now she's official, she can answer your questions about parking and service.
In state government, we call this kingdom building. Be careful, you're going to try to take over more departments, but would you like to offer a little bit here?
We're about harmony. Thank you. This is exciting. I'm very, very excited to have Seraphin as part of our team in helping us build up this division, actually, from scratch. It's, it brings me back to my entrepreneurial roots from the private sector, and so that's exciting. You know, but all in all, this is really going to help us benefit the residents and the quality of life, and create enhancements to the way residents have values in their property, and the way that they believe and think of North Las Vegas, and so this will really bring a lot of benefits, as Seraphin alluded to in his presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate. I see you brought your family here today.
Yes, I did.
Very nice, nice. We're waving to you. Welcome, and welcome to the North Las Vegas family. We appreciate you very much. Any other questions? If not?
I just have one comment. Seraphin, I'd like to, I don't know if you have your calendar, but I'd like to invite you on August 14th at 9:30 a.m. to join me at the Silver Mesa Rec Center. I meet monthly with the seniors there. They love to have visitors from the various departments to learn about what we do at the city, and what they can do to engage and help us in our efforts, and I think they'd be very happy to meet you.
Appreciate the invitation. I'll be there.
Thank you.
If my boss gives me permission.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
We're excited to have Seraphin on the team, as I mentioned last week, our last council meeting. This is a, I'm not sure how happy Las Vegas is that we took one of their very talented individuals, but it was, as Director Gavin said, this truly is kind of, we're looking at this very much as a startup. I know that we've talked with Seraphin when he's, you know, said, I want to have, you know, 30 officers out there, and we say, listen, startups start in the garage. So we started it up in the garage. We're, we're making sure that we're being very careful in bringing this on. When you talked about, Mayor Protem, when you talked about code enforcement, that's something that we're marrying in with this, to make sure that they go in harmony. I completely agree with Councilman on how VIPs can help, and we're really looking forward to this being something that's an important program for the city, and I don't think it would have been possible if we didn't bring in such a talented individual as Seraphin to run this for. So we're excited, we're excited to have him as a member of the team, and really excited to see the value that this brings to the community, and the true beautification that we can see happen with this.
Thank you. With that, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Councilmember Verone?
Yes, I, I approve, but I had a question for Seraphin regarding the rollout to the Latino community, that's all. But I do move to approve.
Well, Seraphin's coming up. Mr. Daffern, that classic vehicle that you bought that we put the bricks under the other day, are you going to be moving that vehicle off City Street now?
It's got boots on it now, the orange ones.
Yes, Councilmember Verone, I'm here.
Yeah, quite frankly, you know, I'm very, very happy to be, you know, I'm happy that we're adding your office, and I know you're a very high-quality person, you know, the right person we need for this. Again, as a member, a former member of the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee, and because this strike, some of my residents, this is something that's been an ongoing issue in Ward One, in my more mature neighborhood, there's no, I'm very excited for this. Matter of fact, it definitely happened, one of our leading residents, Herman Martín, I don't know if he's in the audience, he had some questions regarding parking, and so I just, I filled in some questions from the Latino community. What's going to be our rollout, you know, to get the, get the word out quickly and very expediently, and let people know that, you know, for many other concerns, help it on the way.
Yes, to answer your question, definitely, the educational component is very, very important. We're looking to meet with a couple of the city staff here, so that we can plan a rollout, PSA, community outreach, both in English and Spanish, with the intent that the residents are educated and know. A lot of times, people don't know what's legal or illegal in front of their homes. They assume that public right-of-way, a street that's in front of their homes is their, part of their property. So this educational component will be very important to roll it out. We're going to start working on that. As a matter of fact, we've already done a couple of interviews, one in Spanish and one in English, and we're going to continue to do that on a, on a more formal, strategic way, so that everybody in the City of North Las Vegas has an opportunity to ask the questions, to do the research, and hopefully, the information that we share is-
and hopefully the information that we share is going to be enough for them to know what's acceptable, what's not, what's an ordinance violation. So, and we're looking to do that in Spanish and English. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir. I think so. And if any of my friends there from Pecos Park, again, when I went to their community get-together, again, they have an issue with parking. And I think there's very much, the park are watching. I need to talk to them as soon as possible because I think some of the pilot programs that we're talking about might be of very big interest to them. Seraphin, again, from the bottom of my heart, welcome to the North Las Vegas family. I think our city's going to be a little bit better with you serving them. Thank you so much. And your team, of course.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The item's been approved.
Item 39, passing of adopt ordinance number 2904, authorizing the issuance by the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada of its general obligation, limited tax water bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, series 2018D, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions, if not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Burrow, yes.
Item's approved. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 40, introduce ordinance number 2906, amending titles 8, Chapter 16 of Municipal Code entitled North Las Vegas Fire Code by repealing ordinance numbers 2677 and 2709 and by adopting the International Fire Code 2018 Edition by reference, with the deletions, modification, amendments, and supplements detailed in the document entitled North Las Vegas Fire Code Code Amendments for Adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code. As a new Chapter 92 of Title 15 of the Municipal Code entitled North Las Vegas Fire Code to conform the Fire Code to North Las Vegas to Southern Nevada practices, provide penalties for the violation thereof, set forth the fire permit and service fees collected by the city, and provide further matters properly related thereto. Item 41, introduce ordinance number 2909, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by adding a new Chapter 15.88, which adopts the International Existing Building Code 2018 Edition and the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2018 International Existing Building Code as amended by the city of North Las Vegas, which conform the city's building code to the Southern Nevada practices, provide penalties for the violation thereof, and provide further matters properly related thereto. Item 42, introduce ordinance number 2910, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by repealing existing Chapter 15.04 of the Municipal Code by repealing ordinance number 2656 and by adopting the International Building Code 2018 Edition and the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2018 International Building Code as amended by the city of North Las Vegas, which conform the building code in North Las Vegas to Southern Nevada practices, provide penalties for the violation thereof, and provide further matters properly related thereto. Item 43, introduce ordinance number 29, excuse me, 2911, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by repealing existing Chapter 15.12 of the Municipal Code by repealing ordinance number 2658 and by adopting the National Electrical Code 2017 Edition and the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2017 National Electrical Code as amended by the city of North Las Vegas, which conform the electrical code in North Las Vegas to Southern Nevada practices, provide penalties for the violation thereof, and provide for other matters properly related thereto. Item 44, introduce ordinance number 2912, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by repealing existing Section 15.72.290 and portions of existing Section 15.72.050 of the Municipal Code by repealing ordinance number 2836, requiring baby changing tables in its entirety and providing further matters properly related thereto. Item 45, introduce ordinance number 2913, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by repealing existing Chapter 15.84 of the Municipal Code by repealing ordinance number 2661 and by adopting the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2018 Edition and the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code as amended by the city of North Las Vegas, which conform the pool code in North Las Vegas to Southern Nevada practices, provide penalties for the violation thereof, and provide further matters properly related thereto.
Thank you very much. City manager's report, on your city manager's report, we're going to have Mr. Palmer come up. But did you want him to come up? Then you have any other things you'd like to report?
No, sir. That's basically going to be my report, is Director Palmer's going to come and give an update on Kyle Ranch.
Mr. Palmer. And maybe the questions of Mr. Alpert, if you had those. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Cass Palmer for the record, Director of Parks and Recreation. I had to take it for a second there. But just want to give you a quick update on Kyle Ranch and our efforts, citywide efforts to take this park and just improve the park and give us a wonderful historic preservation aspect that we can go back to our tenure as a city. Conceptually, we started in about 2008 on quick plans. 2010, we found funding. And throughout the years, we found funding from various sources. So we've got various friends from SNPLA and our friends at BLM to SHPO. But it has allowed us to really expand this seven-acre park. I've got a quick document to show you and to orientate yourself. Commerce is on the bottom along here, and, excuse me, Carrion Commerce. The brown areas, Phase 1 is what we're essentially seeing today. You just approved Section 2, or 3, the areas up in here. 2, we're about halfway done with the boardwalk around the lake. On the far side of the lake, that's the next phase coming in. And then Phase 4, the overlook aspect, we're up for SNPLA funding right now. It's their number-one priority project in the state for SNPLA. They love the project. It hits all the major criterion for their project about getting our citizens out into the wild, so to speak, into their park environment. That said, the existing Kyle Ranch is pretty much there. We've got the footprint there. But the exciting news is right here along the Carrion Commerce side, this white area here, we just were able to purchase that land to expand the park, now making the park an additional seven acres for a grand total of 15 acres. So it's going to really preserve that park. This is a master plan concept still in work and progress that we are going to integrate the new seven acres into the existing seven acres and obviously make one combined good-looking park with a lot of aspects and features for kids and school kids to come and tour and get a feel for us on the past, from the Adobe House all the way to rec scenarios that we'll bring over to the kids and let them enjoy. But for the neighbors in that area, the trailer park and the new housing going in, it's going to be a wonderful park and opportunity for them to get outdoors and enjoy. Specifically to Jeff's questions or Mr. Alpert's questions, one of the issues that we just finished up with was the Adobe House. The Adobe House was, in our mind, the oldest house in Nevada. There's an argument up in Genoa, but built around the 1880s, plus or minus 10 years. And we just restored that with SHPO funding, put indoors, windows, and the building itself and a ramp around it is now, for lack of a better word, stabilized. Specific to Jeff's question, we'll open the windows, so to speak, and put some concave plexiglass in there so people can reach their head inside to see on the indoors. We're not going to allow people in the building itself. Building's old. And we want to preserve the building for future generations, but we'll allow them to peek in and see, peek into the past of our history. And then the Doll House, we've got some funding going forward that will improve that also. But right now, we're still finishing up the overlook, which will have a phenomenal look at the park and actually a great-looking view of the city. Then after that, we'll be working on this new seven acres. Within a couple of years, we'll have a phenomenal new 15-acre park for all to enjoy. One other comment Jeff brought in was the Kyle family. UNLV has approximately four remains of the Kyle brothers and a female and a child that we think was the girlfriend. And there's a question about whether or not to reinterne them there at Kyle Ranch on their original property. We're working on that with the state and with UNLV. We actually met the Kyle descendants, about fourth-generation descendants, toured the park. They fell in love with the park, loved the idea and the background to it, and have no objection to interning the Kyles back there or in a regular cemetery. Just let's move them out of UNLV. But all said and done, we may have a Boot Hill Cemetery or we may not, but that'll come in the near future. But I guarantee we'll have a 15-acre park we're going to be proud of.
Thank you. What a great report. And I guess if Mr. Alpert has a couple of other questions, you can meet him in the back. Great report.
He has been a nice resource for us at the park.
Did a good job, Mr. City Manager, getting things done here. Appreciate you. And that's the end of your report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public forum. Mr. Richard, please go forward.
Okay, I've been coming to these city council meetings for 18 years unpaid. Why do I do that? Apparently, I enjoy paying. But seriously, I actually care about this city. I would like to see this city have a much better government and a much better future. And I am just about to the end of my rope of this city council trying to turn me into the bad guy when I'm not the bad guy. And Mr. Mayor, you and I could get along a lot better if you returned phone calls. You have not returned a phone call to me in over a year. That's part of your job. If you don't like your job, you don't own a house here, you could move to Utah and make your wife a happy woman. But apparently, you don't care that much about your wife. Two weeks ago, I've been trying to get away. Believe it or not, I'm sick of coming down here and telling you people what a crappy job you do. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of beating this man up. Ryan and I are great friends. I don't want to make this guy go home and cry every night. So I've been taking a vacation. I thought you'd be happy that I was going to pick on this idiot president we've got, but you wouldn't let me do that. I'm, I don't think you understand what free speech is all about. I don't know where you went to college. I don't know what university you went to, but you need to get your money back. I'm sorry, what? I hear a voice from the sky.
Hi, Gary.
Hi! Hey, we missed you. It's good to have you back.
Oh, thanks. So, you know, in our agenda, it says that the pub, this public forum is devoted to you speaking on any subject within the jurisdiction, control, or authority of the city council. So when you go outside the bounds...
Okay, I did not know that. I've only been coming to these things for 18 years. You're telling me this now. Nobody told me this 18 years ago. But let me tell you something. 22% of the people in this town are living below the poverty line. Donald Trump is having a negative impact on this city because he's cutting Medicaid, he's cutting Medicare, he's cutting food stamps. You know, this is going to have a negative impact. And let me tell you something. I don't know how many people are listening to this thing on the internet. November, we have a chance to vote a straight Democrat ticket, take the House over, take the Senate over, and do something about this evil person. How much time do I have left? Listen, I don't want to come down here and throw mud in your face. I'm tired of it. Do me a favor, return a phone call to me. Let's discuss some things and see if we can compromise on something. But let me, one final question. You did take $20,000 from Bob. Don't you think when he comes in here, you should not vote? Because basically, you took money from him, and he's expecting a favor. And one more thing in closing. Three months ago, when the Teamster guy, Larry Griffith, was down here, he jumped up down, he yelled, he screamed. You didn't say boo to him. What's that all about? I mean, just because I disagree with you doesn't mean I'm a bad person.
Mr. Sharma.
By the way, I'm a member of your church.
Mr. B. Sharma, please.
Mayor, if I can address some of Gary's comments.
I'm sorry, what?
So Gary, I just want to let you know.
Okay.
The reason that the comments are restricted to what the council has control over because they can listen to it and take it into consideration in their decision-making or do something about it. They can't do anything about things that are outside their scope, and that's why we can restrict your...
Well, I understand that. But they can vote a straight Democrat ticket. That would help America. We need to save this country.
Thank you very much.
And Gary...
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, you have more to say? I'm sorry.
Yes, I do. Because if you're being disruptive, I am going to ask our police officers to take you outside.
I don't mean to be disruptive. I'm not trying to be disruptive.
We're going to move on. We're moving on.
Okay.
By the way, just for NRS purposes, the most you can take in a campaign is $10,000 from any person. This $20,000 is another hyped-up number just to be funny or something. So this council has not taken $20,000. It's against state regulations to do that. We file reports with the Ethics Commission and the Secretary of State, so that little lie needs to go away. Mr. Sharma? B. Sharma? He might have been here for another reason. Ms. Sherri White? Ms. White, are you here?
I think I was with the earlier people.
John Puraka? I'm sorry, is John you here? Steve Schoeff, I know you're here.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Alpert, you'll be following him, okay?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Steve Schoeff. I live at 5622 Midnight Creek Street, North Las Vegas, 89081. I'd like to thank either code enforcement or Public Works, I'm not sure. We had an issue over on the corner of El Campo Grande and Bruce, where the water has pooled up for years, actually, because it's not finished. It's a half-street improvement. Called them up, next day, problem solved. They came out and trashed it out. The water's draining away. Beautiful, wonderful to have such quick response from the city. I do have a couple of questions. I know you can't answer them, but maybe I can be pointing to the right person. The new program you have for parking enforcement, are they going to use the same app that code enforcement uses for the telephone? We can just take a picture of the infraction and it goes right to them?
Well, I'll have Mr. Seraphin in the back stand by to, you know, to respond to the questions you have.
And the other one was on half-street improvements. If only half the street is finished, the people are parking over in that right of way, is that also one of the infractions that are going to be supported by this?
Mr. Seraphin, when you get a chance at this meeting, would you meet with him? Thank you, Steve. Those are good questions.
Thank you so much.
We're just learning the issue now. Mr. Alpert.
Jeff Alpert, 3828 Fusilli Drive, North Las Vegas, 89032. First, I'd like to thank Director Palmer for his comments about Kyle Ranch. And he surprised me a bit, something I did not know, I wish I had known about, where that some descendants of the Kyle family actually were here and toured the ranch. Thanks to the internet and our website and our city's portal, you can do a lot of researching and enter, you know, key words. And by entering Kyle, Kyle Ranch, you can really delve into the old city records. And over the last 30 years, we have had descendants of the Kyle family come before council in the 1980s, all the way up to maybe 10 years ago, and do presentations about doing something about Kyle Ranch. And I don't know how Mr. Palmer got contacts with them, because I've spent a lot of hours on the internet tracking down the people that spoke here. Unfortunately, most of them are deceased. I went to nieces and nephews and children. I made calls to New York and North Dakota and other states and couldn't get anywhere. Kept calling cell numbers, message, messaged, and nobody returned calls. So I'm very anxious to talk to Director Palmer and see how he got these contacts, because I struck out. And it would be wonderful to talk to these people, see if they have any information that could help me in the preparation of my book that I'm writing about Kyle Ranch. On another note, I do have a concern. I'm still, and if I'm confused, we're not in good shape because I come regularly to city council meetings. But I'm still a little concerned in our agenda that we have different categories. And we have, first, we have ordinances that are for introduction only. They're read into the record. There's no comment about them. And then, secondly, we have ordinances where final action is taken, like you did tonight, for instance, on the parking services issue. As a resident and taxpayer in North Las Vegas, it would have been nice to have an opportunity to come up here and ask questions about staffing, other concerns I had about parking services. So I'm just wondering if there's any way we can, I'm just curious about how we can change the way things are done so that the public does have an opportunity to talk about ordinances, final action. Because if I can't talk at introduction, I can't talk at final. And there's a lot of issues I want to talk about in the first public forum in three minutes.